You talk to them, Craig. Say something, just a minute. Okay.
You got it, man?
Thank you, Russ.
Okay, I think we're up and rolling now. Good morning, everyone. Uh, welcome to the April 2nd, uh, work session. Let's see, we're gonna, um, well, let's go ahead and start off with invocation. Mr. Slay, if you don't mind.
Father, we want to pause now in this special time of year and thank you for the greatest gift that's ever been given. Father, thank you for your Son, Jesus, who has celebrated the dead, burial, and resurrection. Father, I pray that as we continue to look forward to serving our community together, that you would give these gentlemen the wisdom and the sermon indeed. I pray, Father, that with respect to decisions, important decisions that have to be made, Lord, that you promise to be with us and give us guidance. Father, we're relying on that. Father, thank you for the privilege of service. Thank you for, Father, the founding documents of this country that give us the freedoms to assemble together and conduct the business of the county. I pray, Father, that we will not take that for granted, that we will also remember the sacrifices that it had made to purchase that freedom, and that we would conduct ourselves in a way that honors the sacrifice of those who've given us the freedom. In Christ's name, I pray.
Okay, we're gonna change things up just a little bit to kinda help accommodate the jud- uh, our judges that are here with us today, um, and move on down to, um, uh, open the board supervisors' call it meeting to order at this time, and we'll move on to the presentation of JHNH, uh, with, start out with our attorney Craig Slay.
May, uh, very briefly, gentlemen? Quick summation, um, and this is for the benefit of those who have not been a part of the process to this point. Uh, the need for a justice court and chancery court has been expressed to the camp- to the board supervisors. The board has conducted a lot of activities in preparation for evaluating, uh, that, uh, the potential construction of those facilities to accommodate the growth of our community. A lot has happened during the interim, uh, to suggest that, um, it is appropriate and wise for the board supervisors to continue down this path. Uh, some things have happened very recently with the legislature, uh, that justify, uh, the need for additional facilities and space, uh, revamping of the space that we have here potentially, and other things. And so, uh, at that point, uh, the board hired JHNH architects to shepherd through the process of planning. Jeff McGee and Carl Franco are here. They're prepared to provide this board with significant information about the planning process. You will see information related to potential sites. You will see, uh, what are considered to be schematics at this stage. These are, uh, designed to, to provide, uh, greater detail than, than has been provided to this point, but they are still a work in process, and I think it's important to point that out now. Um, as a part of the planning process, your architects, your county staff, has met with what I call stakeholders, that'd be the folks primarily, who are using the building itself, the, the users of the facilities. Those discussions resulted in a good bit of information that, uh, then further results in what you will see, in some measure, presented today, but there has not been an opportunity to further refine the details. So, I, I wanna stress again that what you are seeing is designed to be an opening look at, uh, what is an, an express need but is subject to further refinement. And because there's been no opportunity for follow-up meetings at this stage with the stakeholders, they are naturally gonna have, uh, questions, uh, and so, uh, at this point, what we would hope to be able to accomplish today is a presentation that shows you, uh, in greater detail and in a form, a visual form, uh, what is a work in process, and, and we're hoping that it would be understood by the stakeholders, that there are further meetings to occur, further discussions to occur, further refinements to what you see to occur. Uh, but this board needed to see, uh, what is, uh, what is being planned at this stage, and also you needed to hear what is the likely cost. And so, that is, that information is gonna be provided to you today. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to either Jeff or Carl, uh, to proceed with the presentation.
Thanks, Craig. Well, Craig did a good job of summing it up. Uh, I will mention, we have also with us today Dane Broadfoot, who, what you're gonna see, a lot of Dane is responsible for. He and I have been working on this. I will just reemphasize what Craig said, was that this is still a very organic process, but what we're gonna try and do is give the board enough information to make educated decisions to move forward with this. Uh, just as a recap of how we got here, uh, uh, this is the timeline. If you will remember back in August, the board authorized us to study the two existing facilities, and basically, there were three, three things that we were looking at. We were looking at the functionality of these facilities, uh, how they function as courts and chancery clerk facilities. We were looking at their current situation regarding accessibility, meeting American with Disabilities Act, life safety and building codes, and then we were looking at, we also studied the feasibility to renovate these. And essentially, at the end of that Phase One, which we're calling Phase One, we presented findings in October. And in our opinion, the best use of taxpayers' money at that time was to move forward with studying new facilities, not trying to renovate the existing ones. Since that time, it ends in December, the board authorized us to move forward with programming studies, and the programming studies, we met with the users and the stakeholders, as Craig mentioned, and we tried to get their needs, we tried to separate desires from needs and prioritize this, and by doing that, we developed space programs, which we presented in January. And from there, we're, what we're gonna show you today is basically the conclusion of Phase Three. Uh, we started in January, and we're here today to show you these conceptual schemes along with potential costs. So, that's really where we're at and how we got here. What we've looked at is basically two sites. Uh, this is existing, uh, chancery courts you're aware of, and the existing justice court and historic courthouse facilities. Uh, this is just a summary of our findings back, uh, earlier in October, which, it just summarizes what I basically already mentioned. Uh, and there was also a severe lack of parking, uh, accessibility, building organization. These buildings, uh, well, the chancery court building was never designed to be a court, as we mentioned earlier. It's kinda evolved over the years, and of course, the historic courthouse was, but technology and spaces and things have changed. So, in looking at these two buildings and the cost to renovate it, we just felt like that better use of taxpayers' monies for the next 25 years would be better to do new facilities. So, this is, uh, this is what we're looking at. The two sites that we studied were the Trustmark, what we're calling the Trustmark site, uh, this property, the county owns this part of it. This property is currently owned by Trustmark, and then what we call the East Annex Site, which is just east of the current annex that we're in. Uh, we looked at those sites for availability, size, function, how would these buildings fit on the site, how would they accommodate additional parking. So, what we really focused on mostly was the Trustmark site, because in looking at the East Annex Site, there's some cost involved in there. You've got this major ravine, uh, you're still limited in parking, and you can just see by the little diagramma- uh, diagrams, that the Trustmark site offers much more potential for building this size. But in studying this, these are some of the design parameters we were looking for in new facilities. We want this building to be efficient and organized, to be highly functional. Efficiency saves costs. Uh, we want to anticipate growth. Uh, Rockland County is growing. It's one of the largest counties in Mississippi. We want to anticipate not only meet the immediate needs, but the future needs down the line, for at least 20 years. Uh, looking at some demographics, the current projection is 4% growth every five years, so in 20 years, that's, that's 20% growth. However, between 2010 and 2020, there was a 22% growth, according to the latest census figure. So, 4% is a very conservative figure, but we tried to take that into advantage. We wanted to provide designs and concepts that would be best served for the public, for the stakeholders, for the staff and the delegates. They need to be energy efficient, they need to have technology, they need to be secure and safely for, not only the public, but the users, and that's one of the big things we saw in the existing facilities. The security at those facilities, uh, is not where it really should be, and it can cause some potential problems in the future. Improving the parking was another major concern, and obviously, the last one, we wanna be mindful of the cost, we wanna be good stakeholders of the taxpayers' dollars. So, these were the design parameters that we kinda guided us in looking at these, uh, potential concepts. Uh, I'm gonna show you several various options. What we tried to do was to give the board enough flexibility in several options to make decisions. Obviously, in meeting with half a dozen user groups, everybody has their own basic needs, there are, there are real needs, but our task is to try and combine these into one facility, uh, that is efficient and then still becomes the most building for the use. So, what we did, uh, you'll see three or four options here. Most of them are very similar, but they do vary a little bit. This is a Trustmark site, uh, Tamerlane Street's down below. North Street is to the right, north is up. Uh, now, one of the, uh, stakeholders we met with was the City of Brandon. Obviously, this will be in the city. Uh, their long-range planning plans, uh, really called to develop North Street on out and connect with 471 and make that a major thoroughfare, and then they have plans to develop further north up in this area. This is our most efficient, uh, scheme. What you see is, uh, basically, two separate wings connected in one building. And what we start with very beginning, this site, Trustmark slopes from, uh, I guess, west to east, and it varies almost 20 to 30 feet, so it's a very sloping site. We tried to tier the site in different levels. Uh, this is a higher part, this is the middle part, this is the lower part. So, in working out the design and trying to keep site cost to minimal, we tiered this. And basically, the reason for that is because if we can take dirt from the higher end and move it to the lower end, then we're just moving dirt around on the site, we're not bringing in dirt from our site, which is very costly. So, what we did, we created, uh, the buildings facing North Street. Public entrances would be off Tamerlane and off of North, North Street. So, this is all public parking. You see three bays of public parking. We've got a total of 136 spaces. We've also created toward the west, secure parking. That would be for judges, staff, chancery clerk, uh, and that would be a gated and fenced parking area. That was one of the concerns. Again, when you're dealing with court facilities, security is always a, a major option. So, in this instance, the staff, the judges, this would be fenced-in parking. We have a Sally Port back here, where the sheriff can come in, uh, drop-off prisoners to be secure. You need gate access. The public access, the only main public access is right here at the center, and you'll see when we get into the plans, there's a reason for that. We're trying to keep all the security at one point. Uh, so that's, that's what we're doing. This is, this level here, even though it's higher than this level, you come in at the same level at the back, and then this drops down at a lower level. So, we avoided all the steps that currently have to deal with it, like in the historic courthouse. There's no steps that you have to get into this building. Uh, we use land to do that. At the lower level, the public entrance, we have the, the main central public entry, and we've kinda divided that into, uh, blow up of that, yeah. We've, we divided that into two, two elevators and two stairs. Again, what we're trying to do is keep one central security. We're very conscious of the staffing, the sheriff has to maintain this, and so as you come into the building, there's one central checkpoint, no matter where you're going. But we divided two elevators and two stairs. Basically, to the left, you go to the chancery clerk and chancery court. To the right, you go to the justice court. And we think that cert- that's efficiency and circulation, but it also provides a high level of, of security and separation between the two uses. As you go up to the main level, you'll see, uh, well, I call it, in the blue to the left is the chancery, the kinda beige is to the right is chancery court, and then the, the yellow up to the right-hand corner is the prosecutor's office, which is really, works with the chancery, uh, the justice court most, mostly. And then the green is public circulation. Go to the next slide. Now, as I talked about earlier, security is a very key point that we tried to maintain in this. So, and I don't know if it's gonna show on this, but what you basically have is you come down a public corridor, if you're going to the justice court, and you have public access, there's, there's a large court that seats 175, essentially about the same as one they have now, and then there's a smaller justice court that seats approximately 75. And our meetings with the justice court stakeholders, uh, this was a need, they felt like, uh, was fixing to be, as I understand it, a fifth justice court judge, and as I understand, they have court every day of the week. Uh, so this was a, was a, was a need, and in fact, in, many people may not realize, but there's two courtrooms right now in the historic, uh, court building, although the smaller one, I don't think is used for anything but weddings currently. So, when I say that, we added some things that, that are lacking, uh, in existing buildings, such as little rooms for attorneys to meet and witnesses. Uh, these are, are critical, there's really no places to meet right now. You see, the public comes in here, you go to the right, and you'd have secure doors in, uh, to the justice court. Now, this is the, the justice court clerk's area. They express a desire to have that divided into two areas, civil and criminal fines, so that's what we've done. We've created workstations in the center, and you have two counters. The justice clerk and the assistant both have view windows, so they can control this. But these are the only, these three areas are the only areas accessible to the public. These doors that you see here and here, and these corridors are all secure. The public cannot get in those doors. Uh, the only people that get in there would be some kinda either card key access or whatever. So, what we've done is we've separated, obviously, the public has to get into the public spaces, but they cannot get back into these spaces without access from the staff or the judges. So, this corridor and all this back-of-house area is secure. You get into it through the back, from that gated, secure parking areas, there's a lobby there, uh, and then there's a Sally Port. Now, we've added, at the request, and it was a need, two holding cells in the justice court, because right now, when they bring prisoners in, they stick 'em in the jury box. Uh, we have, we have the holding cell, so the, the sheriff would bring them in through the Sally Port and have direct access down to these holding cells, which have access to the courts. Uh, but again, they do not have access to the public. In this back corner of the prosecutor's suite, uh, we, it, it needs to be close to the justice courts. Uh, we put it in the back, they don't need just everyday public coming in there, so it's a secure area also. And then you have the judges' chambers, five judges' chambers back here to the right. You have records stored, the judges' lounge, central, uh, restrooms, break staff, an area for constables, uh, which we'll probably need to increase that by one. We've got four workstations now, and jury deliberation rooms back here. And of course, a large courtroom would have a jury. It's gonna be the only court, uh, the only courtroom in this whole entire facility that would have a jury box. And as I'm going forward, just, you know, if y'all have any questions, stop me, I've gone through this so many times, I'll probably get to explain something, but go to the next slide, Jeff, if you will. Okay, and the chancery clerk's office, that's on the first level, the same level as, as the justice court, is a chancery clerk's office. And that's on this level because it needs to have access to the public. Uh, so you can see, in that, you come down the corridor, public corridor, and you would have the, uh, court records area right here that you have now. Uh, you have a reception, court records, you have, uh, this is the commit area that they do right now. You'd have an office there, and then you'd have, right now, the desire was to have a glass, uh, workspace, but this commitment room has been sized to not only interview the person to be committed, but to allow enough room for three or four family members. That was a request and a need. Uh, so you come down this corridor, you have the deputy court, uh, clerk right there, you have the chancery clerk's office there, and then you have a large, uh, court records space here. And if you've been into the existing building, this is, this is a little bit larger than what they have now, but you know, all that's in the basement. And we have sealed records that work off this area, uh, at this time. You go across the hall, you have the land records in this, in this concept, and you have the nine workstations, which is a few more than they have now. You have a large land records area, and you have, uh, the deputy for land records, uh, a chancery assistant, and then an office area, future office for growth. Back in this area is secure staff and break room areas. Again, this is a secure corridor, the public cannot get into this. This was, again, a, a request. What you'll see in this, too, you have two additional, additional stair and elevator right there, and additional stair and elevator right here. These are secure. These are not public access. Uh, they're secure because you'll see when we get to the second floor, these go up to the chancery court suites. So, the public cannot get into these things. For instance, if a chancery staff member or a chancery court, a chancellor comes in, he'd come in through the security entrance, go up the stairs, and never have to cross the public. Uh, now, here, you do, will have to cross it to get to the, but once you get into the stair corridor, the public cannot get up to that, that secure suite. Go up to the second level. This is the second level, uh, and then, so you see, it's a separate, the chancery court is the only upper-level floor. Everything else is down below. So, the public comes in through this elevator. We've tripled the size of the waiting area. If you've ever been over there, you know that that waiting area is very small. Now, we're showing it right now, open, but it can be divided. Uh, that was something mentioned, we can put walls in there. But you come in, and then we do provide another secure checkpoint if needed, with metal detector at this point. Whether that's need or not, we thought it was just a good point to do it. So, you have the public, and then to get into here, you'd have to go through the checkpoint. We have four chancellor, chancery judge, uh, courtrooms, if one at each corner. Uh, this came in, came out of some of our meetings with the judges. Now, I understand that right now, they really only have two, and then they have a family master, but I also know, at least my understanding is, a need, a third chancellor's being approved by the legislature. So, we've got three chancellors, and we've got a family masters. Now, in working out these designs, uh, whether we had three or four, how many courtrooms, is, was our understanding that there was a need for four, because of a lot of the times the judges have to recuse themselves and because of the family master. That's a decision the board will have to make, uh, to us, if, if that's too many or not enough or whatever. But this is where we're at, right here. And what you see is you basically have two separate containing court suites. Each have two, two, uh, courtrooms. Each has, each, basically, each plan works the same. Off the courtroom, you have a judges' chamber, uh, but you come in, you have the court administrator and the court reporter, so this, this little suite here works into this. At the beginning, in front of each courtroom, you have a witness and attorney workroom. Uh, so this is open to the public. This whole area right in here is not. It is secure. These are secure corridors, so the public cannot get in here without getting admission from a chancellor or whoever. Uh, in this area, so this would, would pretty much mirror here, we have, uh, a staff attorney, we have a staff break room, judges' lounge, judges' conference, and, uh, other break rooms. It's basically the same, on the other side, we have the same things. We have the secure corridor, uh, and again, you come up through the secure stair and the secure elevator, so they don't have to go over here. The only time they have to cross is if they wanna have any face-to-face, uh, meetings with each, each judge. We have to provide, you see the green, we have to provide the public access to get out of the building, so the only way we could do this and maintain the security would be have two separate stairs and elevators, uh, at least at this point. This is where we're at on this point. So, that's, now, in doing this, in putting land records, uh, into this building, then that obviously frees up existing land record space. So, what we looked at was how can we get the tenants out of the whole historic courthouse and make use of this existing space? So, what you see here is a concept to do that. We have, uh, the board attorney, his assistant secretary reception right here, we have Eden 911, we have the Veterans Affairs Services, we have election commissions, we have the building permit, which we increased by about 300 or 400 square feet, and we have the health department. So, basically, there's about 6,100 square feet in there, and we feel like that it will fit into that space. Uh, there obviously are some costs to renovate that space, uh, but in our opinion, it's much less cost to do that than try and bring up the existing facility to meet codes. But you'll see, there's some schemes where we do not, we leave it like it is. Go to the, the next, okay. This is the one everybody's gonna be interested in. In doing all this, in this scheme, it came up to 54,000 square feet. Now, if you take the amount of space you have right now, you have about 45,000 square feet in, in the chancery building, in the historic courthouse, and in the land record. So, we're about, uh, we're about 9,000 square feet more, but, but again, remember that what we're looking for is 20 years' growth. Uh, and obviously, we don't, we have more, more courtrooms, more facilities, that some, that are lacking right now. Okay, we looked at cost. Costs are substantial, but we think that these are realistic figures. When you start talking about costs, there's always a lot of variables that we're just aiming at right now. When is this bid? What is, what is the bid market? What is the cost of labor? What is the cost of materials at, at that time? Uh, so, but we think these are good costs to plan for, and you see on this range, uh, that this includes not only the building costs, you're gonna have site development costs, you're gonna, if you put all new furnishings and equipment, then you're gonna have to have security equipment in some maybe, and then soft costs are basically fees and testing, surveys, geotech. So, the range of that cost is basically 15.8 to 19.3 million. Uh, now, if you renovate the existing building, then that, that's gonna range from here from about 380,000 to 540,000. So, those are your total costs for Scheme One, as we see it for new facilities. Scheme Two is very similar to Scheme One. The only thing we did here was we pulled the two buildings apart to create a little more separation, we created a courtyard in here, but everything else is essentially the same. We do lose some parking spaces, a few parking spaces, because of pulling these parts, these buildings apart. As well as this site works, it's still very tight for a building of this size, so you can see that we're, we're limited. Now, there is a possibility, and Buster, correct me if I'm wrong, we may be able to get this, this piece of, uh, of property for some additional parking. We thought we had it to begin with, but in doing some more research, Buster found out that there may be, uh, some differences in property description. But if you can get this piece of par- property, it works out great for some additional parking, that's about all it works out for unless we need some detention or retention. That would work out good there. But if you go on through this, um, essentially, the bottom is essentially the same. You come in, public entrance, everything is pretty much, uh, pretty much the same, except you see, we've now divided this even more, uh, to create a little more separation, uh, separate identities, separate entrances, uh, in that. But other than that, the plans on this facility are identical to what it was on the first one. Go on to the, the next, okay, costs. The costs are fairly similar, however, this one does cost a little bit more because we're, we're creating, uh, a little more space, public, since we're separating facilities, and a little more exterior wall, so this is up to, uh, somewhere 26.6 to 20.2 million dollars. But everything else is the same. Now, this third option, uh, we were asked to look at, this involves the two new facilities, almost everything the same, except we're not, we're leaving land records where it's at, and, uh, we're not putting land records in there. So, what we do get out of this facility, we get a little bit more parking, and we, we actually, this concept provides, it's the same secure parking, but now we've got some additional secure parking that is under the building, uh, under the space where land records was. Uh, and it's actually 12 parking spaces, and that works out for judges, four chancellors, five justice court judges, chancery clerk, and two prosecuting attorneys, I think, if I add that right. So, there's, if you like covered parking, this, this scheme has it.
You increased by how many parking spaces? Twelve?
Twelve, which is these, these, these right in here, which would be underneath the existing building, be underneath the second floor.
Okay.
And that would be gated also. You still have the same central entrance in this one. The justice court wing is basically the same, but, but obviously, uh, the court records wing here for the chancery clerks is the same, but this is where you have the under parking, and then they come in through here, they come in through the secure corridor, and then this is the secure stair and elevator to take 'em upstairs. You still have the same one on this side. And there was a little rearranging, you come up on this stair and elevator, and you come into this suite directly, and so there was a little rearranging, but, but essentially, you still have the four courtrooms in the corners, these are secure suites, and everything else is the same. Now, this cost actually is, uh, the, the new construction cost went down, obviously, we're taking out space. But what we looked at, uh, that would contradict that a little bit or offset it, is, okay, what if, if we, if we leave the tenants in the existing buildings, what do we do with them? So, we, we anticipated that those would have to be brought up to codes, and we'd have to upgrade those facilities. And if you do that, then this actually becomes a more expensive scheme. If you don't do that, then it's obviously less expensive because we have less, less space. And I've got, I've got a summary of these, and I'm going to do it at the end. So I realize that this is hard to put, but I've got a summary that will compare all these things. But like I said, the new building construction went down by about a million and a half, maybe a little bit more. But by the time you improve the ADA improvements, the code improvements, upgrading historic courthouse, if you do anything with that, then we've got to deal with archives and history, which is usually more money, depending on what they allow us to do. We're saying that, you know, the Chancery building needs to be re-roofed. And then there's some abatement in there possibly, depending on if there's any hazardous material. So you can see that that's, you know, that can vary fairly substantial just renovating those costs. The last scheme is even more, is again, is similar. The biggest thing is we've got two separate entrances defined, more defined, so that you have Chancery on this side, and you've got Justice on this side. And the two really can't cross over at all. And we, we carry that up all the way through the building. So everything else is the same. Cost on this is, as you see, a little bit more because we add more square footage, but in a similar range. Go back to the next, previous slide, Joe. Okay, this is a... Yeah, go to the, go to the next slide. Okay, this, this has some additional costs. There was, there's a desire or need to have a walkway from Justice, from the jail to the justice court enclosed, similar to what you have now. This is not a cheap deal. We anticipate it's approximately 300 feet long. It may, we make it squeeze it down to eight feet. We have to have two stairs, one at each end, two elevators, one at each end. Some renovation of the jail, we don't know where that come in. So the cost to do that is approximately three-quarter to a million dollars. We have not reviewed that with the city of Brandon. We don't even know if we can cross North Street. We don't know what the grades are. We don't know what the soil conditions are. We just know that to do that, it's going to be fairly costly. We also looked at if the board chooses to demolish the existing Chancery building, cost of that is somewhere between 75 and 125,000 dollars. And we also realized, and we don't know what the cost would be, to purchase additional Trustmark land that would be needed for this, but that is a factor. What we're trying to show here is that, you know, give you all the costs so that you can make a decision. Obviously, when you start something like this, it keeps, keeps going. We played with images. Again, we're, we're still in the conceptual, all this conceptual. There's absolutely nothing set in stone. As Craig mentioned, we have not, you are the first to see this. We have not reviewed this with the users and the stakeholders to get their feedback. Typically, when that's done, things are changed a little bit. All of this will need much refining and reviewing. But these are some of the images we're thinking about. The goal here was to present a facility that, you know, had judicial image and county image. We tried to identify the Chancery as one, one unit, and the Justice as another, so people would clearly understand. We can also do that with entrances and signage. But you can see here how the site slopes. And we could come in here and flatten this whole site, but I think it would cost more money to do that. And as I said earlier, we're trying to take advantage of this, of the topography. Buster could maybe comment on that a little bit more cost-wise because we think it would save costs. But you basically have one main entry at this level is your security checkpoint. The main level is Chancery clerk and Justice, and then the upper level is Chancery judges. Go to the, go, go to the final slide there. Okay, in this slide, you see, we've actually, this is kind of piggybacks off the last scheme, has two separate entrances. And you can't read it at this scale, but that's Chancery Ju, Court and Justice Court here. So it's, it's very well defined, and we can obviously have to define all this much more. It's brick. We, the, the entrance area is defined with a different material, just so that the public easily recognizes that that's the entrance. It's a fairly, it's a very efficient building for, for all the functions that we have to go in here. You can see it's rectangular. There's nothing, nothing out of the ordinary that I would call as weird architecture. But I think at the same time, it is a sustainable building that would last the county. Well, typically, these buildings last 50 to 75 years. Now, county would continue to grow. We cannot, or I don't think we want to design a facility for 75 years because it'd probably be twice this facility. But this is a 20-year, at least a 20-year facility, 20, 25 years, in our opinion. And so that's basically where we're at to date. Again, it is a very organic process. If you look at the comparison of cost, this is kind of summarizes where we're at on all these schemes. But it's, it's substantial. It's very substantial. But if you think about, go to the next one, Joe. If you think about what the cost would be to completely renovate the existing buildings, you're going to spend, as opposed to 20 million range, from 16 to 20 million, you're going to spend somewhere from 12, 13, or 14 million to renovate. And what you still have are old buildings that's been renovated. You have not solved your parking issue. You would have to get out of these buildings for at least 18 months if you did them both at one time. So you've got to pay rent to do the, allow renovation. If you get them separately, it'd be over a three-year process. You have to bring them up to codes. In the historic courthouse, you're going to be dealing with archives and history, and depending on what their opinions were. So as a person who lives in Rankin County and pays taxes, to me, you know, when we look at this, it's just almost a no-brainer that, that the best use of taxpayer money and being good stewards of taxpayer money are new facilities. Now, whether or not the board instructs us to reduce these sizes, or take something out, or add on to it, that's what this process is intended to do, is to give you the information to make those decisions. And we realize they're not easy decisions, but this is based on what we see every day. I'll open to any questions and trying to answer anything. I know it's a lot of information.
Have you got hard copy drawings on this?
I don't have them with me, but I can send them to, we do have hard copy drawings.
Okay. Another thing, what I was going to ask was, is 136 total parking spaces, I guess this is to the judge kind of, judges, 136 total spaces, is that enough to sustain for two courts?
Depends on the day. If they're, they have a busy day in Justice, and we have a Department of Human Services day, plus your grant, and I, we both have court, no. For most days, yes.
Okay. And I guess 136, is this 136 spaces for the public, or is that total? That's even with the employees and everything?
There's about, there's about 50 secure spaces in that gated.
So roughly, you're looking at about 86, 86 for the public.
That's why if we could get that, that additional piece, that little finger piece, I think we would be able to fit in another 35 or 40 spaces over there. And again, we may can, we may can relay out the parking to get more on there. We, we, you know, and going through these schemes, until the board decides, you know, what scheme or what parts they like from each scheme to put together, it's almost a waste of time of exercise to go into too much detail.
Right.
But, but you can see, you know, there's just almost no way that would work at the annex site.
Right.
For parking. I mean, we would take up some of the existing parking to put the building over there.
Right.
Or just one building. So.
Do we add to that, too? That's more parking spaces than we got now.
Right.
I was thinking, ask you how many, roughly, how many more than we?
Right now, city parking in the front, and then that collection parking lot in the back.
Right. Yeah, they're parking all over, all over the city trying to find places.
There's probably 25 out front and maybe 20 out back at the most.
Right.
So that's more than Dublin?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it is. And, and we have more land, we obviously can put more parking. You know, you can do things like parking garages, but they're not very cost-effective. Just in general. Buster could address that, cost of those things. We, you can see, we've pretty much used this site to its maximum. We may, on the, on the east side, we may could fit in a more, a few more parking spaces there. But we, we anticipate, and with the ordinances for the city of Brandon, we're going to need a landscape. Plus, we're going to need an area to retain some water, do something like that. I'm sure that we haven't, you know, we can do, we can, we can detain water underground and piping. It's more expensive. We've done that before. So we're, we, but we're trying to use green space because it's less expensive. But if parking is a more need, we can, we can look at reevaluating the parking. You know, it's just, we've gone from property line to property line, basically, on parking and building.
Well, I guess it's kind of important to look at the, see if we can get that additional, the availability of that additional area up there that you said would be for like, for additional parking.
Yeah, I think, you remember 35, 40 parking spaces, something like that.
If you just go back to the original screen, which showed the Trustmark parking, would this lay over the top of it? How would this lay out?
Yes, it's basically, Trustmark parking is basically where the buildings are, I think. Is that right, Joe? More or less. Can you go back to that initial?
Back to which ones, or?
That one.
That or either.
Yeah.
Yeah, the buildings are basically, the Trustmark parking is basically in the middle of the site.
Okay.
And you can see, I don't think, I don't think we can go further west to the street because I think that property is, I guess you could always buy a property, but there's, there's a house or something on it. Now, you could go, I don't know what's available nor if that land would be available for purchase, other than that little finger. I, I don't know. Buster, do you know who owns what?
We have ownership on that, but it's private individuals, one of the trusts. So there's probably a good bit of hair of those, in most times, right?
I mean, again, the, the other options are parking garage. And the difference in cost on parking garage, typically, a surface parking is just roughly, we use $2,000 of space as opposed to $20,000 of space for a parking garage. So I mean, it's, it's.
No difference.
If, those become very valuable when land price is high. That's why you always see them in these bigger cities. You've got parking garages because it's cheaper to build those and purchase land. But, but that's where we're at. And I will emphasize again, as Craig did, that we have not, none of the users or stakeholders have really had a chance to comment on this. We tried, we took all their meetings. We tried to listen to their needs and prioritize those. I don't think, I mean, there's always some desires in here, but I don't, we didn't really, I think these are, from what I understand, are the needs and what we've seen in other facilities. And not only just immediate needs, but the needs for 20 years down the road. We tried to see, we visited on multiple occasions the, the use of these courtrooms and what was lacking. And so just some simple things like places for witnesses and attorneys and their clients to meet is almost non-existent or very limited anyhow. Places for attorneys to hook into the computer and get online is very limited. Access to court records. So we've tried, we've tried to incorporate all that into this to give a facility that would be very functional and efficient. And obviously, it's a, it's a big facility. Just, that's what it takes, in our opinion.
So what is your next proposed timetable, then? What's your, what's your future? I know you'd want, you need some, need to sit down, I guess, with the end users and everything, I guess, after, because this is the first time they've seen it, as long, it's the same with us. So what is your proposed plans now?
What we would need is, first thing we need is direction from the board if you want us to proceed with refining the design and moving into construction documents. That's, you know, with, which scheme would you want us to proceed? Or you want something combined? So we would refine that, and then we would sit down. We would, and during that process, go back to the users and stakeholders and sit down with them.
Well, that's kind of like what I was asking about. If I can see some hard drawings, it's a lot easier for me to look at, you know, I understand, looking at the screen.
I can get those to you, I can get those to you probably either today or first thing in the morning.
Will that have all the square footage and everything on, on each?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Joe, there's quite a discrepancy on the price from low to high. That's a big range.
I'll tell you how I came up with that. The low is basically $250 a square foot, the high is $300. And I'll tell you, that's what we're seeing on these type of facilities. And just as a point of reference, your storm shelter was $281 a square foot. So.
What'd you say the low was?
$250 a square foot, the high is $300 a square foot.
So if we come more, somewhere in the middle then, probably.
Probably about what it costs for the storm shelter, about $280 a square foot. But this, obviously, this facility is much more, even though that had federal requirements and guidelines, this is, this is, the finishes and the security in this facility are much more, the technology is much more, much higher than what would be in the storm shelter, I would think. But this is a larger facility, and generally, when the larger it is, the square foot unit costs go down, so.
Well, I think we're going to have to trim something. We don't have that much money. So we're, we're going to have to do something with, even if we get with Scheme One, we don't have 20 million to put out on the building.
Well, and, and that's, I understand that, and that's why we wanted to present those cost figures.
Right.
There's no need for us to tell you it's going to cost 10 million, and then it come in at 15 or 20 million.
And I appreciate that.
Mr. President, if I may, just, the question was about the timeline itself. And I wanted to make a point about a couple of things. There, there are multiple factors that come into the timeline issue. One that I would mind for is that we do not have an understanding with Trustmark at this point concerning the piece of property that Trustmark owns. That is a timeline factor, obviously. Focusing on this site suggests that that is a very important component, part of this process that will have to be addressed. And we are working on that now. And we intend to continue to push that issue and try to ramp that up to get some sort of determination. The board can make a meaningful decision about that. That is out there. Second issue, obviously, Joe, you mentioned the cost. And so anticipating this presentation and knowing that the cost issue is going to be very important, we've asked your financial consultant to appear before you. That meeting will take place, at this point, is scheduled for April the 15th. And so we're moving that part of this process forward. And I wanted to make that announcement in this setting so that all the stakeholders understand that that issue is going to be addressed by the board soon. And we'll have better, I think we'll have better, a better understanding about the process going forward on that date. And so those are two very important timeline issues that I wanted to make sure were on the table for you.
Okay.
Well, I guess with, with saying that, if.
Judge Shirley, you got a question?
I have to come in as far as the supervisor will go and get hard copies of this. I think the judges and the clerks and the prosecutor did do that, too. So we can at least come in on whether we think Scheme One, Scheme Two, or Scheme Three would be going to work.
If I may, I would, I, my hope would be that the stakeholders and our architects will have an opportunity, along with myself and Ms. Laura, to schedule meetings as soon as we possibly can. We'll try to accommodate their calendars as best we can. And all of that information can be made available to them as we are meeting at that time, going through all of these. I think it's important for this board to understand that you have a presentation of multiple schemes. At some point, that needs to be refined down to a scheme. And so we would like to, to suggest that until the board knows a scheme that it is desirous of, I'd like to make sure we focus on a scheme that's going to be the out, the actual outcome. So why don't we try to schedule our meetings with the stakeholders as soon as we can and have those presentations and information available at that time?
I think yes.
But I think that the, the judges and the clerks and the prosecutor need to see the plans before we have a meeting. We don't need something drawn at us in a meeting and say, this is what it is. Choose real quick what you want. We need to be able to look at it.
And I. If the board wanted to authorize the architect to provide the information, you can certainly do that.
I mean, I, as far as I'm concerned, I think that the judge is correct. I think that they need to see it just like we do so they can actually, you know, get their, get their heads around it.
Justice court.
That, you know, to make sure that what they're looking at.
Yeah, there's only one drawing for Justice court.
And they were changing.
Yeah, we're changing, they took it.
Right.
At least that I saw.
Just, I think justice court's pretty much the same on either scheme.
It is, it's the same on all the schemes, pretty much. The entrances change, but the basic layout is the same.
But as long as they're able to get it beforehand, before that meeting, so that way they can get their head around it to see what they're looking at, square footage and what kinda fits where.
If, if the board is comfortable with it, providing that information, uh, then that's, we just need to make sure they know that.
Y'all fine with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it. I mean, it's not even secret.
Hard copy of what's been done.
Correct. That'll help tremendously.
I think he's concerned about us letting out some of their copyrighted information. I think everybody that gets a copy of it or just, just to look at it, we understand that that doesn't go anywhere.
Right.
There any problem with that?
No, no. The, the issue, the reason why we haven't done it is because, obviously, we work for the board, and until you authorize us to release that, we, we're not, that's typically the way we do. I do, I mean, it's hard to make decisions if you don't have plans in front of you.
Oh, I understand that, yeah. I mean, I'm okay with them, with looking at it. It's just something we all gotta work together with, on anyway.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll get, we'll work on doing that, and we can-
It'd be, nothing's in, I mean, it's not a final drawing or anything, it's just a preliminary, really.
It may be easier, and I'll defer to y'all. We can put it on a Dropbox, and you can pull it down from the internet. Uh, it's a, it's, it's too big a file to email, but we can make hard copies too, it's just whatever.
I've got a link already, and actually, Craig has that link, and Jamis does also. We sat last night, flash was the one. Uh, so in the discussion, we come to them, to y'all, to the users, uh, Chancellors Justice, all we can print out, we need to get it to them. I mean, either way, we're, we're good with it. The biggest thing is, we're gonna have to have their input, no matter what.
Right.
There might be some idea that they have, that could possibly see some cuts. Futures always change. How we're, how we're doing things always changes. Storage is a big issue, of course, in these buildings. They could be looking a lot more at electronic media than what they have now. We may see some special kinds of things, so it'd be, it'd behoove us, and of course, the board, to go ahead and get with the users now, to try to see if we can do something with the budget now for the building, so far.
Right.
Craig, you did mention a major hurdle we have to accomplish, and that's acquiring the land, cause the first email I saw had some pretty unreasonable request in it. Uh, I don't, have you had any other discussions with them?
No, sir, not since that point. Uh, we are, there are a couple of moving parts on that that have to be addressed. Obviously, it's not appropriate to go into that discussion here, uh, the potential acquisition land anyway, and so, it wouldn't be appropriate to discuss it, but we're, we're looking at several different options that are out there. None of them have, uh, a, a cost factor associated with them at this point.
Oh.
Uh, so we're, we're a little bit in the dark on how we proceed precisely. We, we have statements of, uh, of the intent to cooperate, and that's why-
And we can't eminent domain it either, right, so?
And it, and it's true.
Don't say that word.
And if everything kinda falls through on that, it's kind of for naught then, almost, right?
Well, obviously, that site-
It's another, another ball to kick around.
Access to the entirety of that site-
Right.
Is absolutely critical.
We just need to make that priority one.
Right.
All right, well, why don't we move forward, we'll just let you, this, we need to move forward on that part also, but I understand we can't discuss that now. Is anything else on this?
Any more questions on?
It may be. We have to look at destruction of, of the, uh, existing chance reports and make parking out of that, cause I, I see that a lot more too. Of course, I don't know what you do in the interim while you're building a new one.
Yeah.
Tearing that one down.
Right.
I don't have any questions, except am I allowed to make a comment?
Sure.
I, I think you've done a very good job. Uh, I'm, I'm pleased with what I have seen, with what that's worked out. Uh, you know, it's, as we all know, it's just dollars and where.
Right, right.
And, um, you know, Trustmark, I don't know how that's gonna work out, and I don't know where. It's not my job to keep up with the money, but I'm, I'm very pleased with what I've seen.
Good.
Good.
I would agree.
Great. I'm glad to hear that. I was, I was gonna ask both the judges on that, to see, you know, if y'all-
I wasn't, I was afraid they'd answer.
Well, the, what pleases me the most is, uh, obviously, the layout of the courtroom space-
Right.
And the security that's there. It does allow for, you know, growth, um, uh, for one more judge, a fourth, when, when it at that time comes. But the, everything from, you know, the clerk being there with us, uh, the layout of it and all, I'm, it's, it's a job well done. Job well done.
Thank you, judges.
All right.
May I be excused? I need to get back to-
Yes, sir.
Sure, that's, we try to do this early, thank you.
Thank y'all for being here.
Y'all have a good morning. Great job, Carl.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us come during Holly Week. I don't know if that was what it was.
And even Jeff hit the right buttons at the right time. That's, that's amazing. I know.
All right, I'm gonna need a motion to, since we moved into the board meeting to recess, uh-
I'll make a motion to recess, planning commission, I mean, the, uh-
Board.
Board supervisors meeting and open planning commission meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, motion made by Mr. Johnson, second Mr. Keith. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay?
Mr. Chair, can I press that?
Okay, okay, mm, okay. Well, we'll do that, we'll have to open it back up again.
We're here, let's go.
Okay.
He's all right.
Um, we called the order this, uh, called order the planning commission, uh, with our invocation, so Renee?
Now, we got consideration and approval.
Where are we on, wait a minute, I got the wrong page. I got it now, here I am. Okay. Consideration approval of minutes two thousand, uh, February twenty-sixth?
Motion approved. Second.
Most approved, Mr. Wilcox, second Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, old business.
Okay, the first item under old business is a conditional use request for Nancy Barkstall at one twenty Evans Ridge Drive. Uh, Evans Ridge is off of Highway twenty-five. It's a one point three eight acre parcel that's zoned RE one. There's an existing single wide manufactured home on the property, and, uh, Ms. Barkstall is requesting to replace it with a brand new double wide. This is a view of the single wide mobile home on that property. This is a home across the street. This is to the north of her property. It just shows the, uh, fence from the used car dealership out on Highway twenty-five. And then, these are surrounding properties. The property was posted, and, uh, we've not received any calls. That's just a review of a hea, hearing schedule for Monday.
All right.
The next item under old business is a conditional use permit for Taffa Porter at three forty-five North Enid Grove Road. Uh, Taffa's requesting a conditional use permit to open a beauty and barber salon in a sixteen by forty portable building. This is a sixty-five acre parcel, um, that's zoned A one. The property is actually divided by North Enid Grove Road, and the location of the salon is gonna be on the north side of this property. This is just an aerial view. There are five homes on the property, uh, and there's an existing business on this parcel as well. Uh, this is upside down. It, uh, the salon's actually gonna be on the north side with the mobile homes. There's three on the north side. This is a view of what the portable building will look like. And this is her floor plan. She shows that she's gonna have two, uh, it's gonna be a two-chair salon. This is one of the homes on the property, the existing business.
I've looked at that, I've looked at it, I'm familiar with that a lot.
Okay, and this is the location of where the, the, uh, portable building will be placed. We posted that property, and no calls have been received on it as well.
Renee, for Mr. President, if I may, just a minute, right quick. Mr. Baker, I had to run and take care of a county court matter, since we went into a different part of the, of the agenda, and, uh, I had sent a message to him, let him know that we're coming around to his client's matter. If we could move, I believe, is that I see, is that, is that correct? Or are we on I C C yet?
Huh?
It's, it's number eight, so it's at the back.
Mr. Baker's here?
Yeah, we're a different one.
I saw guys, and then Baker's here. I saw guys. I, I was confused about which one we were about to get to. Never mind.
Leave to attorneys to confuse things. Okay.
We're good then.
Go ahead, go ahead, Renee.
Okay, um, next, under old business, uh, is a conditional use with dimensional variance request for Joe Frazier of Old Fannin Road Self-Storage. Property's located at eleven eighty-eight Old Fannin Road, which is on the west side of Old Fannin Road. It's a five acre parcel that's zoned C two. There's an existing, uh, mini storage facility on the property there. This is just an aerial view. We received a report, uh, that Mr. Frazier had expanded the mini storage facility without coming, uh, before the board for any zoning or building permits. This is an aerial view of the property in two thousand six, and this is a comparison in, uh, twenty thirteen. You can see that five buildings were added. Uh, Mr. Frazier confirmed that three were added in, uh, two thousand seven and two and two thousand and nine. This is a view of the property. This is a home to the north, office building to the south, and this is Tyra Depot across the street in the pens, across on the east side of Old Fannin. Um, Mr. Parker had, uh, asked for some additional, or some, for some drainage information, uh, on this facility. He hasn't received anything yet, but he has been contacted by the engineer, and, uh, they're gonna meet at the site.
Mr. Frazier?
Uh, Buster's gonna meet with Greg Barnes.
Greg Barnes is the engineer for that.
Okay.
And, uh, he's just not furnished information I asked for, and he called me a couple days ago and worried us, he and I, to meet out there and look at the site, because he's feeling stronger that no stormwater detention was needed, and, uh-
He realizes he has a public hearing coming up, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
But it'll be the first week before he and I can meet together to-
And you requested this back when?
Boy, I've been talking to him for quite a while, putting, putting information in, uh-
Right.
Drainage calculations, showing, uh, without detention and with detention.
Right.
And he finally came back, he basically go, and wanted us to meet out there. He's saying because of the drought, a lot of things, that the water wasn't gonna flow, and it's just a thing involved. He and I have to resolve.
Can you turn that, your mic over around that way, and maybe turn it on, so I can hear you a little bit?
Oh, well, I wasn't even on.
There you go. Now, I can hear you, but I'm, I heard a little bit about it, make sure, I wanna make sure.
Yes, so he and I, yes, so he and I gonna meet out there, because he is of the opinion that drainage is not an issue.
Okay.
And, uh, I've got to be convinced of that. When you cover up that raw land with that many rooftops, uh, that water's gotta go somewhere.
Yeah, and I'm hearing a little bit different, so, little stories out there, so.
Yeah, he said nobody complained, or, you know, around there about water coming on them, and I don't know that.
Okay.
You heard anything? You heard anything?
Oh, that's his, oh.
Okay. Not a word.
The last, last item under old business is a rezoning and conditional use request at four forty-nine Williams Road by Richard Smith. The property is located, um, on the west side of Williams Road at the intersection with McCullough McLenn. It's a nine point one nine acre parcel that's zoned RE one, and he's asking to rezone to C two. This is an aerial view of that property. This is his site plan, and, um, Mr. William, I mean, Mr. Smith is, uh, trying to see if he can be approved, if the zoning will be approved, and then the conditional use would be granted. Uh, if so, Mr. Parker still needs detailed drainage and grading information of this site as well. The building will be two thousand five hundred and eight square feet, um, that he's proposing. It's gonna be constructed of insulated concrete block. This is just a floor plan, and then the, uh, front elevation of the building. This is the rear and side elevations. And then, uh, for the property now, Jay, you had asked for, uh, a video?
Yes.
This is our attempt.
Woo hoo! And, get that down.
Move it down.
This is going away from Florence toward the site.
Right. That's going from, uh, west to east.
This is the start, approximately, in this location of Mr. Smith's property.
Right there.
Where it's been clear cut, right?
Right.
Okay.
You can't see the power line too good in that shot, but it's a big transformer line moves through there, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
That is a straight road, right? It just looks like you're going around a continual curve.
There is.
It'd be going right.
This is the curve.
There's a curve.
Yeah, it's not straight.
Okay.
This is kinda the area where he's talking about placing the building, and this is the-
So, he's not gonna have a lot of site issues?
It's farther around, isn't it, where he's putting the building?
That's one of the things Buster was addressed, is the, uh-
Isn't it right about there?
Hmm, I can't tell on the video. You were looking at the site and looking at that bad curve, and, and, uh-
Right in here, I believe.
This is too far up, but this is the end of his property where the fence is, and then you can see there's some more vacant land past his property.
Okay.
Mr. Bishop, you asked about site distance. That's one of the things that I've been in conversation with he and his engineer about, and they're going to grade, so that bank, as you're going around the curve, they're gonna grade that down to street level, and then there will be adequate site distance. There is not adequate site distance now, no.
So, there won't be a problem if they grade it down, it wouldn't be a sight?
What we're talking about, it won't be.
Think it'll help, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Well, I mean, obviously, it'll help.
Right.
This is a view coming on the other side of the street.
All right, stop, back it up. Can you back it up?
Uh, I can stop it and start over.
Okay, never mind. All right.
So?
That's the resident right there that-
So, we're going back down the road now?
Uh, yeah, you're going opposite direction now.
Yeah, put it in reverse.
You're going toward McCullough McLenn now.
Right, there you go, go ahead.
Technical difficulties.
There you go. Yeah. If you're going down now, that's, he'll be on the right side, that's the left side.
I think this is H T Frazier Road.
Should be right. Should be right in here, isn't it, where, somewhere right to the right, isn't that pretty close, John?
Yes. This property starts across the street.
Right. McCullough McLenn should be coming up right there.
This is McCullough McLenn, right here. It's kind of across from that location. This is at the intersection.
That's a major improvement.
You like it?
How far are we gonna go back down the road?
This is Roland Hill subdivision.
Going all the way to school.
That's it. Okay, there, there's one last one. You wanted to see, uh, Dwayne stood on the property and panned out, so he could have a visual of what, you know, would be seen from the side.
This would be from the store, I guess.
He's on the actual property, uh, panning out.
This road just drove on, Jay.
Yeah.
I don't know why this one's moving so slow.
Is that car coming up weeds?
Uh-uh. McCullough McL- Uh-uh, McCullough McLenn.
McCullough McLenn.
Yeah.
So there's no houses.
Except for that one on the corner, and then there's a mobile home behind it.
The store would be somewhere right in there, wouldn't it, John?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Well, that must've been the house across the street then that was looking at.
It isn't, no, it's on down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's on down at the end of the property.
These are just still pictures of the same thing.
That's, that's directly across the road, I think that's a.
Duke.
I think that's a apartment, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's been there for as long as I've known, yeah. And that's the, I think that's the house that.
Off the road.
The gentleman, yeah, it's a good piece off the road. Okay.
That property's been posted and we've not received any new calls on that.
You've not?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, that's all, new considerations?
All right, the first item under new considerations is a rezoning and conditional use request on Highway 80. This property adjoins the city limits of Pillahatchee, it's on the south side of Highway 80. It's a 9.78 acre parcel that's currently zoned RE1. Mr. Roger Westbury is seeking to change the zoning to C2. The area shown in pink is the city limits of Pillahatchee. And the industrial park is directly across the street from this property. Pillahatchee has I zoning, I1, light industrial in the pink area. And our zoning back to the west is RE1. The railroad tracks border this property to the south. This is just an aerial view, there's an existing building on this property now, on the west side, it's a Quonset hut. This is just a preliminary site plan for what he's proposing to do. He's asking if the rezoning or the zoning change is approved to place a used car dealership on the property. And this is just a basic site plan, he's wanting to see if he can be approved for this use. If he is, he would be required to come back with a detailed site plan and information for an architectural review. This is just a rendering of what the building will look like, he does show some brick, three feet or so. He's proposing vinyl siding and a metal roof. Oh, and, and this isn't the color, I think he was just highlighting that for us so we would see, but he is proposing vinyl.
Vinyl siding?
Oh, and also now this, there's an existing business in Forest that he's gonna relocate to Rankin County if, if the zoning change is approved. This is just a view out on Highway 80, the industrial park is on the right, this property's located on the left. This is a view of the property. This is the Quonset hut that's on that property. And this is just an adjoining property. The industrial park across the street, this is one of the buildings. And this is a commercial business just to the east where it adjoins Pillahatchee city limits.
Has he come before us and asked for something before with the Quonset hut?
Not this man, I don't believe. That Dixie shavings. There, Dixie shavings, I think, had applied for a conditional use in the past.
Yeah.
And that may be it, now Jim Bro is here, if you have any questions representing Mr. Westbury.
So did we allow the shavings?
You did, as a conditional use.
He just moved on, sold the property?
I'm not sure if he.
He just closed up for shaving, but.
Okay. I remember the Quonset hut.
So we just need to set that public hearing for 5:40.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Johnson, second, Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Renee, at some point we'll have a chance to have something to say about architectural controls on the building.
Yes, sir, he's just wanting to see if he can be approved for the use. He understands that he will have to come back with a detailed site plan and for architectural review.
Well, it's obviously in the growth plan of the town of Pillahatchee, and I've contacted the mayor. He's okay with the conditional use, just ask that the building be bricked on three sides. To the top, so that'd be the only condition that I know of that we may have. But just keep that in mind as we move forward, don't let me forget that.
Thank you. All right, the next item is a rezoning due to a map error for Oak Grove Part 5, which is on Old Fannin Road. It's on the west side of Old Fannin. It recently came to our attention that Phase 5 is zoned A1, agricultural. Parts 1 through 4 are R1B, and so we're just making a map correction to get the zoning corrected.
Who called that?
We did, a realtor called in and asked for some zoning, and when we pulled up the map, we realized it didn't.
It's all built out, isn't it?
It is.
Okay.
We need to set that hearing as well for 5:40.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Johnson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, next is a dimensional variance request for Tullis Self-Storage Harbor Gate at 4087 Highway 43 North. Property's located on the south side of Highway 43. It's a 4.2 acre parcel that's zoned I1. There are four existing storage buildings on the property at this time. This is just their site plan showing that they want to add two buildings to the rear, to the south. One of the buildings will be 8,750 square feet, and the other one, building two, would be 18,000. I1 allows for mini storage, but he's requesting a dimensional variance of five feet from each side. Zoning requires him to have 20 feet off the side property lines. This is a view of the property on 43, the entrance. And these are the existing buildings.
And he's wanting to go five feet from the property line?
Right, these buildings are already 15 feet, these existing buildings, they will be the same as these, but the zoning requires 20. And so he needs a variance of five feet.
Yeah, he's not wanting to go 2.5, he's wanting to go 15.
No, he's asking for a reduction.
Okay.
I mean, this is part of a master plan with the house, the subdivision next to it?
It was, it was done in conjunction with Harbor Gate subdivision. It didn't allow for boat and RV storage, and so this was developed in conjunction with that. These are just surrounding properties. This is the actual Harbor Gate subdivision at entrance. Then we need to set that hearing for 5:40.
Set the public hearing.
Motion set. Second.
Motion to set the public hearing, Mr. Keith, second, Mr. Bishop, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, next is a conditional use request for Scott Purser at 198 Andrew Chapel Road. This property is located on the east side of Andrew Chapel. It's a 2.50 acre parcel that's zoned RE1. It's an aerial view of the property. And this is just a street view, Scott's property is on the right-hand side, and the Southern Natural Gas Plant is on the left. You may remember that Scott had asked for a conditional use in 2013 to place a manufactured home on the property, which he did. Recently, due to a fire, the mobile home was destroyed. These are pictures of his property. Okay, and so what he's asking for now is he wants to build a 20 by 66 metal building with living quarters and have a personal shop in it as well. This is a mobile home just north of his property. And then this is the Southern Natural Gas, which is across the street.
Well, you can't have a residence inside a commercial building.
It's not gonna be a commercial building, it's just a metal building, he wants to have a house and a personal shop. Which, we do have people who have shops with living quarters in them. He'll be required to have a firewall as a separation between the two uses. The RE1 just doesn't allow for the metal building.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing, 5:45.
Second.
Motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Johnson, second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
All right, next is a dimension, I mean, a conditional use request for Chondrell Long at 157 Bryant High Street. Bryant High is off of Mount Helm Road. This is a 1.48 acre parcel that's zoned RE1. This is an aerial view of the property. As you can see on this, Bryant High actually turns back to the east, is what I think, even though it doesn't look like it on this, if you look at the other map. But her mother-in-law owns a home, and she's gonna have access to the property over her mother-in-law's parcel. This is the home that she's requesting to move from 129 Bryant High to her property at 157. She's renting the space at 129 Bryant High. This is the end of the road where Bryant High turns back. Her mother-in-law's home is the home in this picture. And this is her property where she's requesting to place the manufactured home. We did a dimensional variance on this property in 2014 because she was thinking about building a house on the property, and it didn't have the right amount or correct amount of frontage. And so that was approved, but I think she's bought an existing home, and so now she wants to place this manufactured home at this location. And these are surrounding properties.
So she's gonna live in this?
I think that she's gonna rent it. She owns the home, the mobile home, and she owns the property.
But she lives, she bought a different home somewhere else.
She bought a different home, uh-huh.
And she's, okay.
She had originally intended to build on the property, but that changed.
I'll make a motion to set that public hearing, 5:45.
Second.
Motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Johnson, second, Mr. Wilcox, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
All right, the last item is a conditional use with dimensional variance request for Willie Gavin, Inc. at 116 Lake Vista Place. Lake Vista is off of Spillway Road. The property is 4.92 acres, that's zone C2, it's at the end of the cul-de-sac on Lake Vista. The aerial view, the Fred's and the MEA are on the corner of Spillway and Lake Vista. Regatta subdivision is to the south. This is just a site plan or showing the footprint of the storage buildings in brown. He also shows an open parking area to be gravel of 41,000 square feet for outdoor boat storage. This is just a rendering of what the building will look like. Building that faces Spillway Road's gonna be brick, anything facing Spillway will be brick. You can kinda see the, well, you can see the wrought iron fence that he's gonna place at the front. It's a decorative wrought iron fence, which he brought a sample today. Y'all can see it.
See it, yeah. You gotta pick it up. John, why don't you jump up and pick that up? That's great.
He's gonna do the heavy lifting on the faux brick panel. And then anything visible above the fence on the side and the rear will be the faux brick that he's showing right there. This is a simulated, simulated view from the Regatta landowner's side with the fence and the buffer of what you would see above the fence. He's also gonna plant 15-gallon Leland Cypress and Gem Magnolias 10 feet on center in the buffer area between the fence and the building. And again, anything visible above the fence would be the faux brick panel, and so from that side, it would look as if they were looking at a brick building. This is a simulated view with a Leland Cypress in place at maturity. And then this is just an illustration of a single-family home in Regatta. And what would be visible of the building, they show that he's gonna change, there's an existing six-foot fence at the property line now. He's going to change that to an eight-foot fence. So this is with the eight-foot fence in place and that 20-foot buffer yard. They would only see the little area in red on the storage building, approximately a foot, is what the application states. And then this illustration just shows the placement of the faux brick panel, and the application said that the faux brick would be two feet at the top of the building. This is a street view on Spillway, the Fred's. This is coming in on Lake Vista, you can see the MEA on the corner. And this is the location or the site for the mini storage facility. This is property at Bowlin Alley to the west. And this is coming back up towards Spillway Road. Joe Parker and Mark Baker are here, if you have any questions for them?
I got one. On the eight-foot fence, are you buttoning it up to the six-foot fence, or are you trying to replace the six? And does the homeowner association?
Come forward.
Covenant's allowed for that?
I'm not sure what the covenant's allowed for that, that's an agreement between 68 adjoining property owners. I met with them over the course of several months, and that's what they want. They want us to take down the eight-foot, the six-foot fence, put up the eight.
So he's gonna take it down? So he just said, take it down? I'm just saying it's their fence, I didn't know.
Yeah, well, we're, that's the agreement.
Yeah.
We're gonna take down the six-foot fence.
Yeah.
That's what we're.
I think that was the question, were you gonna take down or put up against, but you're gonna take down the six-foot and add eight-foot?
Yes, sir.
And that's what they agreed upon?
That's right.
Okay.
Would y'all be maintaining that, I guess, throughout the lifetime of the buildings, or how does that work?
It's gonna be on our property soon.
Okay.
Anything, any other questions?
Yeah, just a fence question.
Need to set that public hearing, right?
Yes, please.
Any other motion to set the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Keith, second, Mr. Bishop. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, site plan, architectural review?
Hey, Mark, thank you for the good work you do.
Appreciate y'all, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be back for the public hearing.
Thank you.
There.
You know, the governor said that.
They don't get your brick.
The governor sounds the best attorney in the county, right, in the whole state, I think.
It don't get your brick.
Yeah, but you gotta give them context.
Um, any other? So there's no site plan, architectural review, nothing there, all right? If not, next meeting will be held Thursday, April 30th, 2015, 9 o'clock.
We need to adjourn?
Have a motion to recess.
Recession?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to recess by Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we're jumping, we're jumping right back and forth.
So May 4th will be our next meeting with them.
Huh?
That'll be the public hearing day, May 4th.
Did I recess, that's how the board meeting?
Yeah, we recessed the board meeting.
So I'll make a motion to reconvene the board meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion to reconvene the board supervisor's work session, board meeting. By Mr. Johnson, second, Mr. Keith, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, I'm afraid she may have left.
Somebody's here to replace her.
There we go.
Okay, good. I don't have your name, so would you come forward with the Brandon Garden Club?
No, sure.
No. And I would like you, if you don't mind, to pass on my apology. We wanted to try to, we had already recessed and moved into our other meeting, and it was been a problem to go reverse back, so tell her I'm sorry.
That's fine, I'm Suzanne Ross, and Charlotte had to leave, take her mom to a doctor's appointment that came up. This is about the Blue Star marker, and in 2009, I was chairman of that committee where we put one at the Brandon Library. I'm a former president of the Brandon Garden Club, I have to take off my glasses so I can. I have to take off my glasses so I can read this. The Blue Star marker is a marker that is in honor of all veterans, not just those that served overseas. For instance, my mother was a WAC in San Antonio during World War II. So it's actually in honor of her as well as my dad, who was in England, who's a hell gunner. We, what we do is we purchase this marker as part of a garden club system. They are on roads and byways throughout the nation since 1944. And they're very much like a historical marker. And we would like to put one at the, it's the Justice Center. And there is a photograph of where we would like to put it on the second page. The first page shows the one that we maintain at the Brandon Library. And the second one shows the bed where we would put it at the Justice Course Center. There's kind of a yucky-looking tree in the middle of this little rose bed that we would like to remove. And when we do put this marker up, we usually have a ceremony marking the dedication. And we're looking to do it in conjunction with the city on Veterans Day, November the 11th. These markers have to be specially ordered. It takes two to three months to get them. And the marker would say, the one at the garden club references, I mean, at the library references the city. This one would say, "A tribute to the armed forces that have defended the United States of America, sponsored by the Brandon Garden Club in cooperation with the Franken County Board of Supervisors."
And y'all will, y'all will purchase the sign and then?
We will.
You just ask us to?
Do the in-kind.
Services to install it?
Right. And let us have the little memorial service.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds very special. What's involved installing?
Nothing really, except for digging a hole, concrete, and putting it in, so.
You could do that.
I can actually do that.
You could.
Part of the Air Force, I did. I dug a lot of holes.
There you go.
So do we need a motion to do anything on this?
It doesn't say in the action. It just says.
Can we?
Request.
I'd like to add this item to the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Add this item to the agenda, but, uh, request to add this item to the agenda by Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Johnson. All favors aye, all opposed?
Make a motion that we approve this in cooperation with the garden club, that we do the in-kind work, and I appreciate you guys' work that you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to approve this.
Installation.
I guess it'd be the.
Installation, yes.
Well, installation and all of the memorial sign by Mr., who made the motion?
I did.
Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Johnson. All favors aye, all opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What y'all do?
And again, extend my apology. It was, kind of got away from me before. We'd already moved back into the planning commission, so it was a problem to read.
That's okay.
So I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Craig Slate, can I get it up to you?
I noticed that Randy's here. I appreciate you coming. Hope I didn't mess you up on that floor. We're trying to put some stain down on the FEMA shelter floor and Randy's making sure that that goes properly. He's here in part on item B. This is just a discussion, discussion item today because I want to point out to you that we probably need Bridget to be involved. Is she on her way? Okay, thank you. So we've got the discussion of a potential action to approve an upgrade to the FEMA Safran generator with potential reimbursement from MEMA for a portion of the cost of the upgrade and authorization for the development and advertising for the bid proposal on that.
Bridget just came in.
Okay, good. Bridget, thank you, ma'am. Come save me, please. Thank you. Let me tell you a little bit about what happened on this. The initial proposals that we were looking at on the generator were for both the purchase of the generator and its installation. Your board attorney failed to recognize that there was installation involved in that, and I didn't separate that out from the actual cost that had been provided to us. When you define the cost of the generator and you separate it from the installation, the actual cost of the generator, one of the proposals around $36,000. The actual cost of the generator is less than $50,000, which means it's not subject to the normal bid procedure. We're allowed to get a couple of quotes and proceed. So your generator cost for the replacement generator is $36,270. The installation cost is, the low quote is $18,900, both of those being less than $50,000. Separating those two out into separate procedures, we're allowed to take those on quotes. And so what is before you now is the authorization to proceed, instead of with the bid, to proceed with the acquisition of the generator and authorization to proceed with the installation of the generator. That costs $36,270 on the generator, $18,900 on the installation. So that would, that would be the motion. Randy's here in case you've got any questions.
What happens to the existing generator?
Randy? What happens to the existing generator that's in the facility?
At this point, we're going to hold on to it with, for sure, we'll need to use some other part of the county.
Tell them why, remember the trade-in value. They're not going to give us anything for the trade-in deal, so y'all be better seated to hang on to it and just put one of you deals as a deal. What was the trade-in?
The way, the way MEMA would be reimbursed, if we get that reimbursement, it didn't make any sense. I mean, it was minimal to get rid of the other generator. And at this, at this point, we would have 125-kilowatt generator, 42-kilowatt generator, were basically the same price as if we would have done it the other way and traded in the generator, we would have got nothing for it.
For basically a brand-new generator, pretty much, I think.
Yeah.
Would seem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's tip.
Well, I'd say about somebody else, him besides, he furnished it beginning. It ain't got any hours on it. It's like new.
Right.
Whatever testing is about the only thing that's on it.
Right.
From what I understand, it got, it run it all.
It runs, it runs once a week. It's a weekly day, but, but not for long. That's just to keep it fresh and correct.
Right.
As I appreciate it, the new generator would run the entirety of that structure. Air conditioning, all electrical, all lighting.
Which it needs to.
So it clearly is an upgrade. We've been working with MEMA concerning the reimbursement on this expenditure. That is a work in process. As you know, that agency has paperwork that has to be completed and applications and who knows what all else. And I was telling somebody yesterday that honestly, it really depends on what day of the week it is and who you talk to as to what requirements on that are going to be. So we're going to work carefully through the process to secure that reimbursement. I want to stress.
Yeah, see, potential.
The reimbursement is.
Potential.
It's potential, and it is not a complete reimbursement.
Right. It could be 50%, be 25%.
Correct.
Or it could be 100%.
We just don't know at this stage. We can't give you an actual figure on that.
Okay.
So we would need action to.
I still approve. Second.
Motion to approve, by Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Wilcox. All favors aye, all opposed?
Okay. Thank you, guys. Item C, quick matter, authority to issue a refund check in the amount of $1,500 for the security deposit to Smith Pro Rodeo for use of the multipurpose pavilion. These are the individuals, this is the company that comes in and supplies stock to the Dixie National Rodeo. They rent our multipurpose facility annually. They made a request through our Commissioner of Agriculture for some recognition of their part, the part that they play in the Dixie National. And at her request, this board authorized allowing this entity to use our facility at our lowest stated rate, which is $250 per day of use. That was approved, and that was passed along to them. They provided us a check for the cost. They, they actually rented the facility for a period of nine days by agreement with us. They also provided a security deposit, which is also required under our policy of the same thing, $250 per day security deposit. And they eventually got us a security deposit check of the same amount, $2,250. So the rental amount has already been deposited. It turns out that they actually were in our facility for either 11 or 12 days. I don't recall exactly, but it was whatever number of days it was. And so from the security deposit, we are withholding $250 per day for the additional rental use of the facility. And that's why we're wanting you to address this so that we can reimburse them the net amount that's left over. So we intend to return to them $1,500 of their security deposit.
Right.
Because they did leave the facility in good shape this year, and they'll confirm that for us, and Trish has also confirmed that.
Yeah.
So I think with, with this act right here, we'll be, we'll have a good program going forward with Smith Pro.
Great.
For Dixie National.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Johnson. All favors aye, all opposed?
Hey, Craig, before we get into this, I think the judge here, he may need us for something. We good? This may take a while.
You sure?
All right.
Okay.
Item D is discussion of vector control. I want to stress, this is a discussion. There is not any intention, unless the board is prepared to move forward, of acting on anything that you hear. As a part of the process of looking at vector control for the county, just as a quick reminder, and this is for public consumption as well, we, the programming that the county engages in now for vector control, mosquito control, is that the county through its EOC essentially operates that county function. We have part-time employees who operate trucks with spray rigs to deliver the chemical as a part of our vector control. That's what we've been doing for years. We do that all over the county. We also do that in concert with some municipalities who ask that the county take that responsibility on. So we have inter-local agreements in place that cover some municipalities in the county. Other municipalities handle their own mosquito control. But for the most part, mosquito control is handled by the county for everything outside of municipal boundary. We do that with our own folks, and EOC sort of oversees that. I think I saw Brian. Yep, there he is. And so Brian Grantham at EOC helps us keep an eye on all of that. As a part of our program, we order chemical. So when we bid mosquito control, we're really only bidding, help me, I get out of line over here, okay? We only bid the chemical. Historically, we have worked with consultants who have helped us with that process to know what, what kind of chemical do we want to order? What are its component parts? They also help us to know how to rotate chemicals so we don't allow resistance to build up. And so we've worked with a consultant who helps us get the chemical in place. We have chemicals stored here at the county, and eventually it goes into process and gets delivered for mosquito control purposes. That's the only thing we've ever bid out. So you guys have had an opportunity to discuss with some providers in the industry who, who have told us, you may be better served, instead of bidding your own chemical, putting your own chemical out yourself, you may be better served, you may see a cost savings by turning that over to a full-blown turnkey service. In other words, let us get the chemical, let us put it out, let us handle your vector control instead of your own folks trying to run all that. And you, and we'll do that at a cost that is less than what you can provide. Okay? The rough numbers on that are, and Ms. Law, you step in and help, around $400,000 annually. 300, between 300 and 400,000 dollars is what is budgeted for vector control costs. That would include, obviously, equipment, maintenance, spray rigs, chemical itself, and then personnel costs. And so you can see, that's a rough estimate of what it's costing the county to do that. So we, your legal staff looked at it. I worked with Bridget to get our heads around what's the best way to go through this, since we're a little bit late in the game trying to get this handled now at this stage. But what we found through the AG's opinions is that turnkey vector control services is not subject to the bid law. And so we are free then to work with any service providers under an informal context. And what we did was we took a couple of service providers who'd already expressed an interest. We shot a message to those guys and said, "Put together for us turnkey mosquito control service package. Tell us what you'll charge us to handle our mosquito control." The parameters that we used was, we would like to start as soon as possible. April 15 would be a start date. That's coming up really quick. And because this is an election year, and there's the possibility or the, the reality of a new board coming in, we proposed that it be cut off or terminated November the 15th. That's a seven-month program for 2015. Essentially, it's an opportunity for us to get a look at how turnkey mosquito control works without a long-term commitment and then evaluate where we are. And so with that understanding, two proposals have been returned. I want to go over those with you. I'll start with one, Vector Disease Control, Inc., home office out of Little Rock, Arkansas. Local contact is Brett Killingsworth. I believe I saw Mr. Killingsworth come in. And he operates out of Jackson Address, Foley Street. Vector Control, I'm sorry, Vector Disease Control has provided a very detailed company profile, mosquito control program and plan. And the bottom line is, they are offering to do a seven-month program payable on a monthly basis with a 30-day out at any point. This board can say with 30 days' notice, "Thank you for your time. We're, we're finished." With a 30-day out, the total cost of the program for that seven-month period is $220,000. Right? And I have a copy of that proposal. I am prepared to.
What about the other company?
Yes, sir. I've got another one, too. I have that proposal ready to get out to you guys so that you can go through it. It's about 30 pages, so I wanted to go over with you first and find out, sort of from a direction standpoint, before I went through the process of putting the 30-page proposal in your hands first.
Right.
The next proposer is Mosquito Contro, I'm sorry, Mississippi Mosquito Control, Inc. Home office is actually out of Louisiana, Baton Rouge area, if I remember correctly. They also have a presence in Mississippi and Goshay. They do a good bit of work for, obviously, Louisiana parishes, but they also have Jackson County. And they have made a proposal, which is actually an annual proposal. They chose not to respond to the seven-month window proposal and instead have offered an annual turnkey contract. And the, the cost of that is $326,000. They, they did not provide me with a, with a, an example contract. Vector Disease Control, the other proposer, has provided a, an example contract, which I've already reviewed and gone over with their contact. And I find that proposal and the contract to be compliant with the request that was made. Mississippi Mosquito Control did not provide an example contract, and so I don't have, I don't have anything that I can tell you about whether they're willing to do a 30-day out, whether they're willing to resubmit a proposal, although we're very late in the game, to go to a seven-month window. I just don't know. I don't know the answer to those questions. And so those are the two we have. What I had thought we might want to look at was go ahead, and with your authorization, we can have it placed on the April 6th agenda for Monday for you guys to act on, if you'd like. If you're prepared to move forward today, that's fine, but I wanted you to have the benefit of these proposals in your hand to review if you wanted to. But we do have Monday that we can take action.
I guess.
If you have any questions of Brian.
Right.
Concerning how this works, whether he and EOC has had a chance to really go through this. I don't, but y'all haven't seen the proposal. Have you, did I get y'all?
I saw Vector Disease Controls. I have not seen.
Hello?
So what happens in case of there's a problem? We have people call, as they do every year, complaining about people not coming down. Are we still going to have, be able to track where you go, how often you go, what speed you go?
Yeah, that, that'll be all.
Come, come up, come forward, please, both of you. Brian?
We have, we have GPS on our trucks, and you'll get a monthly report of what streets we hit, when our sprays are on, how fast we're going, what chemical we used and all that.
What about our existing?
And I can give them, Jared, Jared has some example maps and stuff that I can give them just to show him, you know, around. them just to show him, you know, around, you know, some of our contracts.
I failed to mention that we also asked each proposer to comment on the fact that we have part-time personnel who make routes, drive trucks, et cetera, et cetera. To comment, what not, they would be open to, to use our existing personnel.
Right.
And I know that Brett did respond that they didn't see any problem.
We don't.
At least approaching our, our folks.
So you can use our?
And pay them the same.
Pay them the same?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, they wouldn't mind, they wouldn't mind an increase, you know?
Yeah.
Well, the difference, the difference may come, the difference may come, correct me if I'm wrong, is if it, you know, right now they, they're only limited so many hours. If it comes to they have to do more hours, then obviously you would.
Yeah, we got other guys, you know, and.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying, no, I mean, I'm sure they're willing to do the extra hours if they need be. We're, we're limited ourselves to what we can allow them to do.
I got you, yeah.
But you'll.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have, we'll have crews. I mean, another thing y'all would get from us is that we'll probably set anywhere from 15 to 20 traps on a weekly basis throughout that seven-month process. So we'll set trap, we'll, we'll cut the county into different zones and sections and set different traps every week during the day, pick them up, let them sit overnight, pick them up the next day, collect the mosquitoes, we'll tell you what species you have and we'll get them tested for West Nile.
Really?
And so you'll know that, you'll know, we call them hot traps, you'll know if you have a hot trap within, you know, two days instead of however long, you know, it takes.
So if we do run into a situation like we had two or three years ago where we had a lot going on.
We'll know it pretty quick.
Do you cover the additional expense of needing to do additional spraying or do you come to us?
No, we, we cover it. We cover it.
So this is.
We're going, I mean, we're going to spray as much as we need to.
So this is not to exceed then for the seven months and so we're not going to have any?
Next year it'll be the same price. I mean.
What I'm saying is, if, kind of like what Jay's asking, I guess, if we have some hot spots, you know, is it, is it going to be the 220,000 turnkey and there won't be an additional 30,000 because we got hot spots out there, anything like that?
You're not charging extra for the hot spots, we were asking, I think.
No.
Okay. And also, what about your vehicles? Are we going to be using?
Our vehicles.
Your vehicles?
Yeah, we, you know, we have our equipment that we like to use that hooks up to all our, our equipment so we can like get it downloaded and print y'all maps out and all that kind of stuff. So we're going to need to use our equipment.
All right.
Which are.
As far as liability wise too, you know that.
Y'all are named as the additional insured under our insurance.
Okay, what about the fact that we can't go on private property? So you'd still fall under that same regulations, I guess, through?
Whatever, whatever rules y'all go by.
They would, they couldn't get on private property?
No, sir.
No.
They are acting in our behalf. They would be subject to the same.
Oh, shoot, I was hoping they could.
But I may be wrong, but part of the understanding was if Mr. Joe Smith, whatever address contacted them and said, you know, can you come spray? They could work out a deal separately that would be private.
Where Mr. Joe Smith pays for it, not?
Yeah, they could do that, they could do that at that point too. I mean, we got.
We have the liberty right now. I cannot, no matter.
That's right.
And we have handheld backpack sprayers that we use the same chemical we use in the trucks, we put in our backpack sprayers, we can go in their backyard and if they have a, you know, standing water problem, we can kind of educate them on what to do and treat it with Larvicide.
Well, yeah, that's the one thing I was going to ask about. Do you, does that additional with that 220, I know you've got creeks and stuff like that, do you put in the tablets and stuff like that?
Yeah, that's included. I mean, we, like our day crews will be setting traps, you know, in the morning and also Larvicide, you know, during the daytime.
Right.
And then we'll have the night crew come in and get in the trucks and spray.
Okay.
Well, what about, what about the, I said, we have a gentleman that we basically works, excuse me, year-round that goes out and does some of that. How will that, speak about that a bit?
Yeah, we have a part-time employee that's year-round, he doesn't spray, he's the liquid Larvicide guy for the daytime and we'd be interested in maybe talking with you guys about retaining him as our employee, still doing the liquid Larvicide for us.
Okay.
Dedicated employee, does, you know, whatever we need to do.
Okay.
He goes, yeah, goes all-around, helps out some of the trouble spots.
We're, we're open to.
Now, something as a suggestion is if we, you know, we got 30-day out, so wouldn't you think it'd be good for us to, at this point, just house our trucks and equipment and see how this goes?
I'm thinking at least just to make sure. I mean, I, not that I don't trust you, but the bottom line is, I don't see why we'd need to get rid of our stuff and then all of a sudden we needed 30-day out and we're scrambling trying to get vehicles.
That's right, yeah.
And other points, since we were unsure or whatever, I've got all the vehicles are ready, all the sprayers are ready, everything's sitting on go from county standpoint, whichever, whatever y'all.
Okay.
Right.
Good.
So how, if, when you, when you would use our personnel, ranking county personnel, would it be very much training difference at all versus what we've got now?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, there might, you know, and I, Chris is probably better the answer to that. He'll be here Monday with me, but he's the Director of Operations, so he knows a little bit more about the equipment than I do.
Okay.
But I don't think it's that big.
Right.
I don't think so. All of our sprayers are running, they've worked with us for many, many years.
Right.
We've got one new guy this year and they all attend an adapt code.
Right, yes.
Training class every year, so.
We got, that's the equipment.
There's no learning curve at all.
And I know a lot of the drivers, obviously convenience is that they keep the vehicles at their residence because they usually spray in that area. They'd be liable to that.
Yeah, they're allowed, yeah. I've, I've talked about that with the guys, yeah. They're not, they don't have a problem with that. Y'all use London Fox?
We have London Fox in our yard.
Okay.
Brian, you feel pretty good about this?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because you know it's going to, going to be on you too, so.
Right.
I mean, that's, you know, not to put you on a hotspot, but I mean, basically you are the man we'd be listening to to, you know, to get the recommendation to find out because you know way more than we do, but it sounds like.
And in that proposal, I mean, you know, we have some references. If y'all want to call those guys and ask them how, you know, references, you know, like Hines County, y'all can call the City of Jack, you can call Jonesboro, Arkansas, Ruston, Louisiana, City of Chicago, Illinois, I mean, what, we're all over the country.
And they have a telephone number that if citizens have a complaint or a question or anything like that.
Y'all can call our office, they call, come straight to us or y'all can call me.
That come to you?
You can come to me.
Man.
And I'll let the guys know.
We put that number on our website, huh, Jay?
And we bought any Spain.
Put that number on our website.
Be a great idea, wouldn't it?
Do we have any stockpile?
Brian is asking about product. As you know, we went out for a bid.
Yeah.
We have not responded to that. Obviously, if you guys go in a turnkey direction, we won't need to.
We won't need to get to purchasing.
Product.
Yes.
Bridget's still here. I think we got product through the end of April. I've got product on hand at EOC stored right now.
What we do with that?
Probably at least two months. Is there a shelf life on that, Bridget?
It should, I mean, it just came in just about a month ago, so it's your final.
I've got it covered, isn't it? I think, I think warehousing, our equipment, and also including the chemical to see how this goes.
Right.
Over the seven months.
Trial and error.
Three-year period.
Right, true.
Right. If I may, we, we explained to both proposers that the intent would be to discuss this with you guys today, but that, but that Monday at the board meeting would be an opportunity for a real, a more formal.
Right.
Presentation and review. So if I may suggest, just out of fairness to the other proposer, that we allow that to happen on the 6th, it gives us time. We can implement what we need to implement if you guys take action on the 6th.
To get started on the 5th.
I think that'll be good because there'll be some more people, some more people attending and I think this is very good information.
Right.
That could be something good for the county. Hope so anyway.
Yes, definitely want to build it.
Brian, do you see anything at all? You're Bob, anything?
From what I've seen with their proposal, I hadn't seen the other one yet, but it seems to be they're going to be doing the exact same thing that we have been doing in the years past.
Okay.
Well, it looks like a little bit of cost savings plus the lack of having vehicles and everything else, liability and all that. I mean, it's, looks like a pretty good cost savings, tremendous. And possibly, I won't say that, maybe better service.
Mosquito control as well as our people.
That's exactly right.
Right.
Keep the hot spots, keep the, keep the western.
Well, in some ways it sounded to me like it might be even possibly better into the fact that the number of traps they set out.
Right.
Kind of identifies some of the worst areas.
That's right.
And I thought that would also be a, be a plus for the.
Well, the quick turnaround, quick turnaround like that, that's very, that's important.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, we'll send some of the mosquitoes, you know, to the state or, you know, the stuff, but we have our own lab and, and that we test ourselves. I mean, we've got the equipment that we can actually test ourselves, you know?
Good.
Do a lot of that, so.
We'll see you Monday. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Laura. Excuse me, that's Laura Oster, County Administrator.
Thank you. The first thing I have this morning is discussion of possible action on the Libert HVA system for the electrical room at the JDC in Pilahatchee. And I'm going to let Johnny come up here and explain that to you. Actually, he'll be explaining A and B for you, but we'll have to take them as separate items.
Pleasure.
My goodness.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Basically, what we have right now, the existing design with juvenile detention center, the electrical room was not included in the conditioned space of that building. It's adjacent to the server room, which carries all the computer equipment and everything for the administrative side of the juvenile detention center. The UPS is housed in this electrical room. It's a rather large unit and the battery life on this UPS is predicted at five years. Well, right now we're three and a half years into that use of that UPS and we've just had to change the batteries. It had a pretty substantial cost. I think the overall cost for those batteries was changed last week was $11,000. So we don't want to get into changing batteries. We don't have to change them every five years as it is. If we can do something to protect batteries to get that extra year and a half, this air conditioning system being proposed is going to help, help that come through. So it also is going to become a primary air conditioning system for the server room, which right now is only being supplied by a rooftop unit, three-ton rooftop unit. And if something happens to that unit and it goes down, then the temperature in that room rises as well. And we have had some computer loss because of that situation. We've got a cost estimate. We haven't technically received quotes on this, but we have put together a cost estimate for this project. It's going to be in the range of $25,000 for the Libert system. And that will allow this rooftop unit that's in place now to become the backup for that server room. So if the Libert system goes down, then the back, the rooftop unit will actually come in and help keep that server room cool. While it won't keep the UPS cool, it'll at least protect the computer equipment. But that's pretty much it on item A. On item B, the discussion would be for the HVAC control systems to be upgraded for the Justice Center, the Adult Detention Center and the Annex Building. The controls that we have in place right now are outdated, 15, 16 years old, they're outdated. Our sensors on, on these buildings are.
We just built this building. How can it be 15 years old? We just built it.
Well, it'd be the Annex Building, which is this building, the, this building may be a little older than that, but the, right now the Justice Center and the Adult Detention Center were built at the same time in 2000. So they're 15 years old.
Did we?
I thought you were talking about the juvenile.
I did too, I was saying, wait a minute. I'm sorry, I figured. Did I need to wait on item B? Do you need me to go forward? He's giving me a hard time.
No, really, I was thinking, man, where, where'd you get your dates?
This is on the Justice Center, the Adult Detention and the Annex.
Oh.
Didn't we talk about that during budget time, that we budgeted for this or we were? I thought we had discussed this, this building and other ones with that.
Not on this particular thing that he's wanting to do.
There was some discussion on changing the, on air conditioner on this particular building for the board running.
That's different than this.
Right.
Changing the design.
Okay.
And we do have some units that are going to have to be upgraded, that we're going to have to change out some units on several different buildings out of our capital projects fund that as they go out, we're going to have to replace them.
Did we put enough money in to do all that? Okay. So you're not looking at an increase in the, or?
No, no increase in the budget. And this isn't to replace any of those air conditioners, this is on the controls.
So how much are you wanting to do?
On the controls, estimated cost overall is going to be $48,000 for the three buildings. That's all new controls. That's going to allow us to pull each office up on our computer and check discharge air, check oil pressure on compressor, particular unit, and we can diagnose what's going on. And I think the ladies in here that are in this building will tell you, the thumbwheels in this building are nowhere near calibrated and accurate.
Oh, we know that.
You may have one office that's 65 degrees and the office adjacent to it may be 80 degrees. But this all, this all comes down on a controls, being a controls issue. The equipment has got age on it, but it's a mechanical issue on that. This, the controls very well may extend the life of this mechanical equipment by reducing runtime. Right now, our biggest problem is the Justice Center, the chiller and the boilers run 24/7. And these new controls are going to allow these, these units to cycle on and off and put them on a timeframe to where, in a schedule to where they'll cycle on and off and we may get more life out of them.
Going back to your item A, do we really need two units? Do we need a backup? I mean, it doesn't take long to get an air conditioner fixed, does it?
It doesn't, but when it happens, the last instance, it's really brought this up, the last instance that happened was over a period of a weekend, an air conditioner went down, nobody was monitoring the room, temperature got up to over 90 degrees and we actually lost, Prime Logic has a service agreement for the fire control on that building and they actually lost $12,000 server that controlled the fire alarm system.
Sheriff, what you got?
That's one, we're talking about everything, we're not talking about human comfort. We're talking about everything that is controlled by the locks, I mean, everything that's being controlled by a computer in that room. It's overheating, it sets the locks down and plus you can go to get a longer life out of that all the computer.
That's got the cameras and everything else?
Everything's, right, everything's in that room and that's what.
It's got to stay cool.
And that UPS packs all that up along with the generator. And like I said, the battery life on that UPS is a factor as well.
So what's locking, what's overheating? The server room or the?
The electrical room is overheating all the time because like I said, it wasn't included in the conditioned space in the original design. There's no air conditioner in that room at all.
So are we going to leave two air conditioners running up there now?
It'd be, this, this unit will control both rooms. The only room they'll have backup by the original unit, the existing unit will be the server room. But this, this unit will cool both rooms.
And we don't have to do anything today? This is an estimate, we do have to get two quotes?
This is not unusual. I don't know why it wasn't designed that way, but not unusual. You go waterways, experiment station, yeah, that they have, they have to keep the temperature certain, maintain a certain temperature because of all the computers and everything.
Yeah, same way with banks and everything else.
It's a, it's a design flaw with the sheriff's office, the, with the, all the radio system, the nine-one system that'll run there. Whoever built it didn't take into consideration all that heat, sweat and cut, two vents and put in that door. It's still eighty or ninety degrees in that, with those conditioners.
We did address this, um, the first summer that they had occupied the building. We met with the architect at the time, first summer, um, Sheriff Pennington's still here at the time, I believe, and he called meeting because the room was getting hot and the batteries were already showing some, you know, resulting loss of life. You know, even into the first year.
Yeah.
And the architects and Paul Bowen and I, we all met and they, they were dead set on that the room temperature was not gonna affect the batteries. And that, that mechanical engineer intentionally, you know, there was no need to put this in a conditioned space being an electrical. So, but it has been discussed before a couple of times, but this is where we're at on it and it's being brought up, we had to change the battery just last week.
I don't think it's any, we don't have much choice.
Right.
Cause, but there is a bad design flaw that, yeah, it is what it is now. Okay, so we don't need to take any action on this?
No, we don't, we'll have to come back with quotes on those for you.
Thank you, Johnny.
Okay.
Item C is request authority for Brett issued to travel to Meridian to instruct the following classes, April the sixth through the tenth will be the FUN SAR. April the twentieth through the twenty-fourth is the SAR tech evaluation and May fourth through the eighth is the MMST exercise.
Most to approve.
Second.
Most approved. Mr. Johnson, second, Ms. Wilcox, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Next item, it would be the review of the agenda items for Monday's meeting.
I've already been through it.
Yeah, there was one, uh, trip for, uh, some of our guys go to mosquito deal.
That is for the, uh, year-round part-time person, that is our permanent position that does, he's the one on there to go to the, um, uh, training program. So, if y'all intend to keep him, then he would need to go ahead and attend this.
Because that's certification of the chemicals, in order to do those.
Yeah, I didn't think we were keeping him though, I thought that they were.
Oh, it was mentioned a while ago.
We were talking about just then, about keeping him, he's a part-time guy.
This keeps him running up to date on their license for that. David Lay is the part-time that does it year-round.
Right, but I thought that it was understood that they were asking to keep him as our guy to do the.
On our side.
Let me ask you a quick clarification, is this an annual cert, is Brian still in here? Is that an annual certification on him? If, if the board decides to go with a seven-month preview, then it could be, it's possible if things don't go well, that we're, we're back in the mode of doing it ourself. And if it's an annual certification, there could be a, a hole.
Yeah, you're only looking at four.
I think it'd be good to keep him, him certified because you, you do have to have someone that's certified to handle certain chemicals on staff there.
That's what, that'll be at the extension service.
I mean, I, I'm not supposed to give him certified, I am, to keep him on staff if we're about to pay somebody to do this. Why would we want to keep an individual employee that we're paying somebody else to do the job?
They just thought it'd be good to have him to.
Is that what Brian, that suggestion?
I don't know. You need to get him back in and talk to him then.
We can hear from our ELC guys on what their thought process is on that.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anybody else see anything? I, I do have one little thing, uh, just to bring up for thought, once you get through looking through the agenda. Before we reset or go into executive session.
I think you have the floor, sir.
Huh?
I think you have the floor.
Well, I didn't know if y'all were still looking, it looked like the pages were still flipping.
I don't see any.
Okay, um, it brought to my attention or came up that there would be some, uh, strong interest. And I believe it's the same guy that's doing the, uh, uh, farmer's market in Jackson and throughout different areas and trying to do one and using the, uh, multipurpose building. And I just wondered if y'all thought that might be something you'd be interested in, but get him in here, talk to us about it.
I've heard the same thing and had a lot of, a couple of people talking about that. And I think they've actually spoken to the city of Brandon and then they kinda moved them down towards the multipurpose building and stuff, which.
Yeah.
To me, I think it's probably a great, something at least to, to discuss.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I think if you, you know, if nothing's interested, we'll get some, uh, maybe I could give them invitation to come in, just kinda present what we're talking about. You, you see any problem with it, Brian? I mean.
As a matter of fact, it was one of that, we're just looking around and working on Pavilion and everything. You know, the area, when you drive in where the, uh, the main arena is and you back in there, there's a, there's a riot, usually kids play under this couple of picnic tables and all that red dirt everywhere.
Right.
I think that'd be a perfect place to do what you told me, if we could like concrete it or put something in right there. Just really not use that well, and I'd really like to get rid of that dirt there and make it a little bit cleaner right there.
Right.
I think that'd be a perfectly, there is covered in case it is raining, it's still outside.
Right.
Well, I mean, if we, uh, for the time, maybe, uh, did the slag, fix it where it had a good base.
The only, the only thing, uh, was, I was, somebody got on to me about that, is that slag if it gets over in that riot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if it gets on the riot arena, yeah.
Okay, anyway, um, if you.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Entertain, at least consider and talk to them, it might be something, another use, positive use.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's mostly, a lot of them are rank and countenance, I mean, it's, you know, they're, they're out there with their vegetables and their fruits.
I don't see a downside to it.
Okay, all right, well, I'll, I'll just make contact and we'll go from there, okay? All right, don't hold us up any longer, uh.
I got something.
Okay.
Uh, recently, I've been contacted by the, uh, lot owners in Avalon Business Center in regards to petition against, uh, previous application by Capturian Network LLC on the billboard on Old Fanning Road. And, uh, I believe the board had, had voted this issue three to two against the billboard. Capturian takes it to court and the court orders it back to us. So, I'll, it looks like everybody's touch base with me and I'm trying to get it back on the agenda to move forward. Because that's what the court wants us to do.
What do they need to do, Renee? Think, be your department, wouldn't you?
The next planning commission date, is that what we're looking for, Craig?
Yeah, let, let me just briefly add what Supervisor Keith has just mentioned. What we, uh, what your staff is looking for is because we're sort of in a no man's land, it's not very often that you have a reviewing court and appellate court. In this case, a circuit court sits as a review court or an appellate court over, uh, the board supervisor's decisions. Once a bill of exceptions is filed, that's the same as a notice of appeal for a political subdivision. The reviewing court, the appellate court, has returned the matter via remand to this board for further consideration. The decision was essentially, I don't have enough information in front of me to make an informed decision about the basis upon which the denial was made. Therefore, I'm sending it back down to the supervisors for further consideration and clarification of his decision. And then, if the parties are still aggrieved, one or the other, they can bring it back up and we'll look at it again. So, it's been kicked back down to us. Uh, in my experience, I've been practicing law now for over twenty years, it's hard to believe, twenty-two years. Uh, and this is the first time that I've ever seen an appellate court review a political subdivision decision and remand the matter. You ever seen that before, Judge? Okay, so, we're in no man's land, we're not sure what happens next. The applicant, uh, has not made any effort to formally, uh, bring the matter back before the board. But you do have citizens who are out there who are very interested in knowing what is gonna be the determination of the board on this issue that they're concerned about. And they're frustrated because it doesn't seem to be, there doesn't seem to be a process for getting this back in front of the board for review. So, your staff not wanting to jump ahead of the board and put something in front of you that, uh, that you were waiting for the applicant to do. We, we wanted some direction from you guys. Shall we place this back into the process? Would you have Renee go ahead and put this back on the planning commission agenda for processing in the normal course? And if that's the board's decision, we're, we're ready to do that, we're able to do that, we just need direction from the board as to whether that's what we're gonna do.
I think we kinda need to have to, we need to, that's what the judge said.
That's, that's exactly, and, and I was gonna ask the question, how long ago was this decision made? Because it's been several, several months ago.
The initial discussions were in twenty-eleven, the decision was made in twenty-twelve. Renee, help me, uh, if I remember correctly. Uh, and I believe, uh, that there has not been any formal action, there may have been one series of discussions about it and then the matter was removed from the agenda at the request of the applicant, if I remember correctly.
But when did?
Mr. Busby's here, but.
But when did, when did the judge formally send it back?
June twelfth of thirteen is when this is signed.
Yeah, June of twenty-thirteen was when the remand came back. The board's initial decision was in the fall of twenty-twelve.
So, we're almost, almost two years that it's been going on from the judge coming back to the, to the supervisors.
That's great, okay. So, and again, just so we know where we are right now, uh, we, we don't have anything in front of this body to talk about right now. It's not on, it's not on the planning commission agenda, uh, it's not, there's been no notification given to anybody about talking about this, about hearing, any formal hearing on this. We need to move it back onto the agenda so that it can be discussed. If the board is ready to do that, the unusual point is that you guys are pushing it forward. Normally, the applicant wants it on the agenda and asks it to be placed and we normally, we know how to do that. In this case, uh, we've had no formal request from the applicant to get it back on the agenda. And in order for it to get back on there, we need you guys to tell us, put it back on there.
Okay. Excuse me, your court, mister.
What do you say, what do you think, Mr. Keith?
Um, Mr. Keith wants to put it back on the agenda, you're gonna have to tell me how to word it.
Well, there's, uh, it, if, if I may, just informally, is there anyone who opposes placing this back onto the planning commission agenda?
I don't.
It seems to me that there's a consensus among the ones here, I don't know what Mr. Johnson's position, but four of you guys are at least not indicating a no response to that question. So, my suggestion would be, Renee, the board would like for us to put this back on the planning commission agenda, that's what we'll do. So, we'll put it on the commission agenda, it'll go through a cycle now. Renee will have to get notifications back out, we'll have to go do the publication, we'll get notices out to affected landowners, the sign will go back up. Uh, and there will be a hearing date provided to the applicant and to those who are interested in getting the information. There'll be a hearing date set for us to have an initial review in planning commission, just like you saw today. Renee will put it on the board, there's an application for a variance on a billboard and you will have an opportunity to see what that's about. She'll tell you that it's coming up for hearing on the business update, there'll be plenty of notice about when the ultimate decision's gonna be made.
Can we say it for September?
So, Renee, what is, uh, in all actuality, looking at your dates and everything like that, what are we looking at possibly for a public hearing on that?
September.
The next date is April thirtieth for the planning commission. The next date would be April thirtieth for the planning commission, uh, meeting. And we could set a public hearing for May fifteenth or June first, whichever, uh.
Okay, sounds great.
If you prefer, if, if you wanna do it that, that soon.
Sounds like a plan to me.
You heard him, September.
May sounds good to me.
Before we move on any further, uh, Judge, did you have something?
Yes.
We, we, it will be later.
Executive session.
Okay, all right. Well, do I have a need to go into executive session?
Personnel matters, personnel.
I make a motion, we discuss the need to go into executive session.
Second.
Okay, motion to go to executive session, need to go to executive session by Mr. Johnson, second, Mr. Wilcox. All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Yes, sir. I'm trying to get it done. Well, the, the actio hasn't been taken yet, so it would be.
Doesn't have to call me Johnson.
Are you campaigning? How you doing? Are you campaigning? What you doing? You're just out of business.
You're doing all right, you're looking good. Yeah, fat and happy, man.
I think Sag can take care of some of them. It'll get rid of the fat and the happy.
Yeah, throw it down.
Yeah, it's on, we're moving forward. Did you hear him? Laurie, you just get around fifty or every time I see you.
I hope it will continue that way.
I'm getting mad, they, they had to go to the restroom.
Not mad for an old lady, two weeks out from surgery.
Well, they've all vacated.
Have you had a chance to look at this proposal yet?
No, because we've been in here all morning.
Well, y'all, y'all be doing more important stuff.
I'm not willing to admit to that just yet.
If you, if you keep going to those to each of the supervisors, please.
All right, I have a motion. We can move on, okay, Walt, we can handle this.
That's right. Well, they ain't lying out there now.
I'm breaking her in now, but she'll be able to reduce.
Is this, uh, is this something to do with the court reporters?
Nope.
Oh, hallelujah.
They'll come somewhere down the road.
Oh, Lord, yeah, I know.
Did y'all email Andy Gibson?
I don't know where his mind is.
How many years has he been having?
She's got thirty-one with the state, but twelve in my office and then, uh, before that with the clerk's office. She's got about seventeen with the county, but then she was with other organizations.
But totally, she's got.
Totally, she got thirty-one.
I don't blame her.
Which is, I know, I hear you. So, we need, uh, we need to go into executive session, discuss personnel. I make a motion, we go into executive session, discuss personnel.
Second.
Okay, most, Mr. Johnson, go into executive session, second, Mr. Bishop, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
General, I'm open. Mr. Wilcox.
Uh, Judge, hold it, Justice Center.
Sure, ma'am.
Let's give this janitor some chance to turn our system off before we.
That's right, we are in executive session, testing.
Y'all make a motion to go into?
Yes, we did.
But done.